I've got a call to order. The regular city council meeting of Granbury, Texas is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, September the 19th, 2023. We are at Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in the beautiful city of Granbury, Texas, 76048. Now, if we could, I'd like everyone to stand for the invocation. Senator or Pastor Alan Lotta of Generations Church of Granbury is here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, thanking you for bringing us through that hot summer. Thank you, Lord. The new season is dawning upon us. And, Lord, we thank you for tonight's meeting. We thank you for the freedom we have to be a self-governing nation. We pray, Lord, for your blessing upon our community and upon this meeting tonight. Give us ears to hear one another, hearts to understand one another. Give us courage where we need to move forward and caution where we need to hold or slow down. Lord, we pray for answers and solutions as we see your will done on earth as it is in heaven, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. If you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We're going to move right along to proclamations, then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kaufman, and we have some recognitions that we will have here. But first, I have a proclamation that candidly I wish we did not have to do, but we will do it tonight. Let me come out front. So anyone coming up to be a part of this proclamation? There we go. Thank you. I know this lady, so...
Justin Rosner, I'm the Director of Programs with Mission Granbury.
Marilyn Luton, President of the Board, Mission Granbury.
Nadine Shealy, I'm a Direct Services Case Manager.
Rebecca Freeman, Shelter Program Director.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming up. And again, I would say, I wish we really didn't have to do this, but I think we do have to let people know. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. And whereas, on a typical day... Listen to this. On a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Mission Granbury received and responded to 944 hotline calls last year. That's three or four a day. The need for safe housing continues to be cited as a survivor's most urgent need. And whereas, as Mission Granbury provides a safe haven shelter for women and children who are victims of domestic violence, for victims that are not seeking shelter, Mission Granbury's non-residential program provides victims with safety planning, counseling, case management, and resources. In fiscal year 2023, Mission Granbury's Family Violence Program provided services to 139 women, 11 men, and sadly, 109 children. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I, Jim Jared, Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Granbury and urge all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact it has on our community, skiving under my hand and sealing the city of Granbury, Texas, on this third day of October 2023. Here's the official proclamation. Did any of you, young ladies, young men, want to say anything?
Do you want me to say something? It looked like he wanted to say something. I really thought he did.
I do want to say for October, we have a couple of events going on for domestic violence awareness. We have our annual Ghost Run going on, and we also have Light the Night. That will be October 21st, and that's to recognize and honor the victims of Texas that lost their lives last year due to domestic violence.
Thank you. Again, I think, you know, a round of applause for all of the help that these people do provide. Thank you all very much. Does... I don't think Jeff's going to let her do that. Oh. Mr. Kaufman, I'm going to turn it over to you, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Got a few items I'd like to celebrate with you tonight. First off, I'd like to celebrate Lieutenant Garrett Wington. Is he here? I don't know if he's here, but he recently became the 52nd Officer in the state to complete the Texas Police Chief Association Law Enforcement Command Officer Program. The goal of the Law Enforcement Command Officer Program is to encourage and provide leadership development to up-and-coming law enforcement leaders and consist of a recommendation from the chief administrator and completion of 10 prescribed TCPA courses in one of two required tracks. So, thank you very much for that, Garrett. I know that we don't get to say thank you enough, but we appreciate you, and I hope that you're feeling the joy of being completed with that program. Also, I wanted to salute... Also, wanted to take hats off, salute to Jeff Newfer, our Communications Manager. We... He recently completed a program at TCU called the Certified Public Communicator Program, and it included 95 hours of graduate-level instruction over a year of training and valuable interaction with municipal communication professionals, researchers, and professors. Each student created a customized communication plan for their organization. We've already seen some of the benefits of the program with the new listening and surveying programs being developed, and decisions are made with the benefit of broader range of the valid community input. It's also become a valuable resource for our city to have Jeff to be part of a close network of public communicators to give us... to give and get feedback on new ideas on how to better serve our residents. So he's going through this course, he met a lot of peers and built relationships with them over the 95 hours of classroom, and he's been able to call them and get advice. They've been able to call us and get advice. Networking really is a powerful tool. The next thing I'd like to do is turn it over to Tammy Dooley for a minute. She's got a little deal that we're going to celebrate, and I'll let her spill the beans on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Which one would you rather me talk about first? The Cultural Arts Commission or our History Ambassadors? Okay. So this is a new program. This is really exciting. Everyone knows we have a VIP program, and it's Visitor Information Professionals. This is a volunteer program at Visit Granbury, and years ago, when we started it, we just thought that was an appropriate name because, to us, they truly are VIPs. So, over the last few years, they've evolved and do all kinds of things. Everybody knows they stuff our welcome bags, they stand with us in the mud at Spartan Events. They just do so, so much, and we celebrate a lot. So they're a great group, and they also attend Rise and Grind, and another great networking opportunity. So many times, we want a lot of feedback from them, so we ask them what it is you really want, because everybody has different talents and needs, and because we're a historical community, this group right here, on their own, suggested we need, like, step-on historical character guides on the trolley to create a better visitor experience when they come to Granbury. This is not something that will be scheduled. This is something that, as a visitor, you will be surprised. All of a sudden, you're walking around the square or riding along the trolley, and a character from the history of Granbury steps on. So I really want to give them a big thank you. This does not cost the city a penny. They have invested countless hours of training into this as the character. They have purchased all their costumes on their own, and this is something they're doing to benefit the community and the tourism efforts here in Granbury. It's led by Dan Vanderberg, who everybody knows is a fantastic historian here in Granbury. So tonight, they're getting ready to start this program in October, so tonight, we ask them to come in full character and introduce themselves, one at a time. And they know they're going to keep it short because you're a busy council, but they are going to introduce themselves. So, Dan, if our new Visit Granbury Historical Ambassadors would come up and your... Yes, and you can go ahead and put your hats back on, and then let them introduce themselves to you, and I hope you enjoy this.
Have them go to the microphone.
Oh, you want to come to the microphone, one at a time? That's great. Yeah. Or here, the handheld, do you want that one or this one?
I'm Tom Mullins, Hood County Sheriff. I've had the distinct honor and privilege to serve all of you from 1914 to 1918. It's been a wonderful experience. We've got a great community, and I pray that we will continue to keep our fine community safe. As an aside, the judge mentioned to me to turn off my cellphone, and I said, "What's that?"
Hello, everyone. I'm David Lee Nutt. I'm the youngest son of David G. Nutt, who was a founder of Hood County and the Granbury area. My two brothers, my two blind brothers, Jesse and Jake, donated, along with Tommy Lambert, the 40 acres that Granbury now sits on. My home is right down the street, the other side of the square, at 319 East Bridge Street. And somebody said that it might be used as a museum at some point in the future.
Good evening. I'm Sudie Nutt, and I'm married to David Lee Nutt, and we preside at 319 East Bridge Street, where we have welcomed guests and turned it into the first hotel of Granbury named The Nut House.
Hello. I am Lizzy Nutt, and I am married to Jesse Nutt. We migrated from Missouri and absolutely love this town of Granbury. My husband is blind, but with my help, he became the first county clerk in Granbury.
And I am Judge... This is terrible. Abel W. Landers. And because of my exposure to construction when I was a child, when I got to Granbury and they were talking about the square, I suggested that they build it in the Shelbyville model, which was a courthouse in the center with all the retail buildings across wide streets looking in.
I'm Nellie Robertson. I'm the first... Hello. I'm Nellie Robertson. I'm the first Hood County Attorney in the state of Texas and in Hood County. I was... It was in 1918. I was the age of 24. I served three consecutive terms. Now, remind you, 1918, that was two years before women got the right to vote, so the men of the county, they voted me in three different times. I was the only child... only girl of... And I had five brothers. My mother raised us. She was... Our father abandoned us. And at that time, I learned that I needed to be a very independent woman, so I supported myself and went to the University of Austin and got my degree there and came back and then served as county attorney.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Andy Aston, and I want to invite you all to the Aston-Lander Saloon. It'll be just a little confusing because you'll see a sign for a bookstore and a winery there, but if you take a look at the threshold, you'll see Aston-Lander's there. Moved with Mom and Dad back in 1849 when I was two years old, and now my wife, Dolly, and I live over at 221 East Bridge Street, right off the square.
Hello. I'm Fanny Bond Yates, and my husband, Austin, and I came to Texas in the early 1850s, along with my family, the Bonds. And Mr. Yates built a log cabin for us, just not far over here, and it was built before the town of Granbury ever existed.
Good evening. I am Emma Ames, and I was part of an entertainment troupe that traveled through this area. We went anywhere where we could put up a curtain on a pole and create a stage, and it happened that the... There was one right here in Granbury, upstairs above the feed store, so we got to perform there. But it was rather peculiar because I ended up doing everything, just doing sets, doing props, and then expected to sing in between acts. My husband, of course, was an actor, and he got paid, but I never did.
Do you want to say your real names?
I'm Dan Vanderberg. Kent McKern.
I'm Susan Uten.
Tammy Quisenberry.
Carl Boucher.
Marcia Dickens.
I am George Bowden.
Ann Blessing.
I'm Suzanne Walsh Cooley. I'm a costume designer.
That truly is a unique experience that our folks will be able to enjoy because of these folks being creative and practicing their art. This is an art. This is a form of art. We really hadn't discovered that, but it is, and we appreciate you all, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Who's the guy in green?
That's James Dickens. That's our Chairman of the Parks Board. The next thing I want to talk about is the Cultural Arts... Granbury Cultural Arts Commission. They worked really hard since they were created. We've gone through about two terms of different people, but this last wave of folks really worked hard and put together a very successful application for... to create a cultural arts district in our community. And we were recognized, one of two cities in Texas, to be awarded that distinction in this last month, and I would like to thank the Cultural Arts Commission for all the hard work that you all did to put that together. And hats off to you for being successful. I know it's our third time to try to get it done, and we finally got across the finish line and received the recognition, so thank you all for that. If you're on... I know Mickey's on there. Is there any more members on... in here that was on that board?
Mickey.
There we go. I didn't see Mary Ellen. Okay. Well, thank you all very much. It's very important. That's something that the council, you know, worked with, and hats off to Mayor Southern as well, because he worked hard and worked on the admin side with me to develop the budget that needed to be in that document and the commitment that were made by the council to make that happen financially. And so we're looking forward to all the good things that's going to come out of this Cultural Arts Commission and this distinct certification that we've got. And it's going to increase more tourism, and obviously, obviously, people are going to come here to do all kinds of art projects, so that's pretty fun stuff. So thank you all. Oh, I do want one more thing before I quit bragging on people. We're on Day 51 of a cyber event, and you may have seen our little news flash that went out yesterday. We are in the final stage of being healed from that, and it's exciting to get this close. We may be able to send out water bills by the end of the week, so that's huge. We... The Finance Department processed, with some other help, we've been pitch-hitting with them, they personally hand-processed over 10,000 transactions since the outage in the 50 days, probably more than that now. That was the count last Thursday. And over $2 million worth of revenue, hand-generated, the old-fashioned way, you know, none of this bank draft, none of this credit card swipe, it's all been the old-fashioned write 10,000 different receipts. And they've been really working hard behind the scenes. We've got them set up in a room downstairs where they're reconciling all these bank records and all the payments and all the meter readings at the different times, so everybody's cycle gets reconciled properly. They're not billed for water in a cycle that would make them pay more than they would at another time. They're working very hard to get that perfect so that we can send out a bill. And so to the Finance Department, hats off to you, and to the IT Department, we're ready to kill you, but we love you, and we know that you're working behind the scenes crazy, and we can't get all the parts quick enough to rebuild this system, but, man, we're just full of gratitude for all of our team, working hard, getting creative, tethering to their cell phones so they can have internet service. Who would have ever thought we'd rely on our cellphone to be able to work at City Hall? So it's been quite the challenge, and... But we're looking forward to the... We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train, and that's good. So thank you all, everybody, for your hard work on this outage.
Yeah. It's, you know, it has been hard work, and I have to just comment and compliment City Manager Kaufman, because not only is he very creative, he's also very cost-conscious, and he looked around and said, "Jeez, if we can't use the computers and we need to move this furniture anyway, while we're at it, why don't we just put down some carpet all over this side and then down on this side, the whole thing?" And so things that might have been delayed another couple of weeks, no, they got pulled forward, so I appreciate all the hard work that everybody has done, just pitched in. It wasn't, "You go here, you go there." It was, "Where can I go? Where can I help?" They did have me on the desk once. It lasted five minutes. It was tough. Okay. Anybody else? Sir? Okay. All right. Let's go to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. I don't have anything, and we have... Everything on the agenda is non-public. So we'll just move right on to the consent agenda. And all items on the consent agenda are routine, previously discussed, and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the current consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 6.4, the master fee schedule.
Just to pull 6.4 and deliberate on it. Okay?
Everybody should refresh their stuff on their iPad, refresh it, because we put a new schedule in there for you.
Okay. Are there other items that we'd like to pull off? Okay. So anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 6.4, which we will deliberate later?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus 6.4. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. Passes 6-0. Now let's go to 6.4. Consider adopting ordinance number 23-63, amending Articles 1.5 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinances, the master fee schedule. Mr. Rodriguez, I think this is about 110 pages. Is it all that you've pulled off, or are there a particular item?
Yeah, we're just going to start with page one and then go through all of them.
We'll go through it.
No, Mayor, I'm trying to find the page that I'm trying to refer to. Give me a minute. It had to do with the other services for city... Other city services, so I'm looking for that tab. It's on page 33 of 34, so the second to the very last. So it's under Division 17, Other City Services. Charges for city services rendered... The one question that I was going to ask Chris is, the labor charges for regular hours per employee, why did it go from 50 to 65? And does that include any employee? Does that include... What does that employee look like? And we're on the verge of answering that. I just didn't get all the information. And just on... To tag on that, you know, there's some changes on security services that has been provided by our police officer that is $55 an hour versus if they're an employee, they're getting paid 55, but in this case, it's a regular hours per employee. These employees are going to get 65, which doesn't really add up. Why is one getting 65 and the other one's getting 55? So I just wanted clarification on that.
So you're on Section 1.50.700?
That's correct.
Regular hours, this is under charges for city services rendered. I'm going to call on Ava as our Finance Director to address this item. She's on top of it, I think. Thank goodness.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. We have reviewed... This is an annual review of our fee schedule, and we receive input from all of our departments. The... One of the services that we regularly charge for is we have a public infrastructure policy where we are charging developers for infrastructure-related electric services as well. And so when we reviewed all the labor that we charged most for, we were trying to come up with an average to recap the expenditures the city has to ensure that the services what we are providing, we are sufficiently charging for, and based on that, that hourly rate has been updated.
Okay. Thank you, Ava. Just to clarify, is this for any employee, or is it specific... For a specific employee that is talking about here for the $65?
So, as I mentioned, most of the fees, labor fees that are charged, are related to development, mainly electric infrastructure that we have been having to charge for when there is a new electric infrastructure put in. And because our rate have changed for electric employees, we have adjusted those fees. So we are not really charging for services like finance or anything like that. It would be more like public works-related expenditures, and the biggest cost that the city has is related to putting in new infrastructure and employees who are actually providing those services.
So is it just for the electrical department?
Mainly. It's an average, but it's mainly the electric, yes.
Okay. So who's going to make that determination that employee A is going to get 65? Or do employee A and B get 65 across the board?
So we work closely with the department heads, and based on which employees are assigned for those services, we will adjust the fee. If we are not using employees, that we will not overcharge anyone. So obviously, we will adjust the fee if the employee's hourly rate doesn't match what the fee schedule shows, but this will allow us to charge the fee to recover the cost in case those employees are utilized for those services.
I think a good example of this would be... I think a good example of this would be, um, an event on the square where they have the electric boxes installed, um, for the event. And there's, on the permit that applied for the event, there's things like that have to be charged. And so, we, we have a, a good idea how long it takes the electric people to install that equipment. And so, that would be reflected. We multiplied that amount, times the amount of time. Uh, maybe putting out barricades and things like that, there's a fee for that, and we've got that in here already. But, um, say like if, if they need special services on the weekend that, say, um, the, the public works or the parks department, somebody from, um, one of the service-oriented departments has to be there on a Saturday or a Sunday to facilitate successful event for those, those people, then we have this fee schedule set up for that. Now then, I think your concern is that the police are not getting paid as much?
Right. And, and that is my next concern, is that i- if we're talking about all employees, because this is under other city services. So, it could be, it could fall under any department. It could fall under the building permits department, the public works department, because it's not specifically under those departments. So, when I look at this, I'm looking at it, well, this could be used for any other department at sixty-five dollars. And if we're gonna use this rate at sixty-five dollars, let's just make it across the board. I would hate to pay a regular employee sixty-five dollars and then you have security services that have to be licensed in certain things and carry a certain license at fifty-five dollars. They're more certified, they have to take in consideration. It, I just wanted to, let's just make it all sixty-five. If, if we're gonna be paying all employees, which this looks like it's encompassing, let's just make, uh, the security services at sixty-five. And it would just go along with this, uh, sixty-five dollar rate as well.
So, let me add some more to this puzzle for you. These people that are doing this work, you look below there, they're talking about bucket truck, backhoe, bobcat, all these pieces of equipment, okay? That's where this kinda falls into for charging services rendered. This isn't under the security topic. These fees are gonna come out of the city funds that we pay benefits on, okay? So, if we got an employee that's making forty dollars an hour, by the time you get through paying them, they're making, uh, you know, all the benefits and everything, this is a fee that we're charging to reimburse the city for the expense of us using our employees to go do their job.
Okay.
So, the difference is, is the, if I'm not mistaken, the, the police department get paid individually from the event people for their event if they're, like, they're at the conference center providing security service. From what I understand, they get a check from the, the person putting the event together for that. It doesn't go through the city books at all. So, there's no TMRS added to it. Am I right, Mitch?
That's correct.
Now then, if we go to sixty-five dollars, does that have a positive or negative impact on the police being able to be used?
It'll be a positive on our end.
Okay.
Because our guys are gonna wanna work for that. That's more the problem we're having on that, is that it's not what we're getting paid now for those security services, which is enough for different guys who wanna work. So, we have a lot, a lot of risks that goes along.
Can, can you come up, Mitch? I'm sorry, uh, just wanna...
That's negotiated with the person having the event. We don't receive those.
Oh, yeah. We don't receive them, but we tell them how much they charge.
Or they can get paid security.
They do, that's why I was asking, Mitch. The question up here is, is if it's priced too high, like ninety dollars for overtime hours per employee, um, if it's priced too high, will it eliminate some of the revenue coming to our people compared to another, uh, law enforcement agency that, that fills in for that role as well?
It could if it's too high. I don't think the, the numbers that I put out, uh, requesting the increase in to fifty-five is, is near that limit yet. I, I don't know if sixty-five would even be at that limit at this point. But you can go too far, uh, we can, um, on what that number is. And it can, it could affect those job opportunities, uh, going forward, but, uh, we're, we're too low now.
So, do you, do you have any issue with going to the sixty-five as suggested by Councilman Rodriguez?
Do I have an issue with it?
Yes.
No, and it would, it would more than likely be a wait and see on what the effect of it would be.
Okay.
If we did that. I don't, I don't think going to the fifty-five is gonna be, uh, any issue whatsoever. I, I don't think sixty-five would either, but again, you, you really don't know until you put the number out there and then see how, how things go.
So, let's ask Ms. Dooley if, if she's got a perspective because she deals with all these events and tourism. You, you wanna contribute some conversation here?
Well, I agree with what Mitch said. Um, it, it will impact. Um, the problem we're having right now is that the police officers may or not want to work the event because of they're not making enough money. And this is the same thing in every city everywhere. And so, generally, when it's a true police officer, they typically make more. What happens when, um, we don't get those slots filled is we have to go out to private security, which is less, which is not as good. Um, it's, the situation coming up with Lake Fest is a good example. We have, um, we're expecting huge crowds because of the drone show. And so, the goal will be to have real police officers there, um, because of the potential security risk. So, it's a quality issue of who you're having there versus, no, nothing against private security, but if a police officer's not going to fill the role, we don't have a choice but to get private security. And then we're, you know, at the risk there with what that is. So, does that answer the question?
Thank you, Tammy.
Hey, Tammy, have you ever had someone say, I'm not gonna do this event here because of the cost of security? It's too high?
We do have people complain, but they do the event because they have to. They have to have security. Now, I can tell you, to put it in perspective, um, from other venues I've managed, depending upon the market, in Midland, the security was off the chart. The, the police officers and the sheriff's deputies could go to Walmart and make a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour.
Wow.
Running security. So, in the grand scheme of things, it's a very low dollar amount and needed, and we prefer those officers. We only go to private security when we have to.
Hey, Tammy, when you go to private security, do they carry the same certifications? Can they carry sidearms? Can they do all that stuff as, as a regular police officer?
I'm not an expert on that, but I can tell you, I don't, I don't think there's any, uh, sidearms involved.
Okay.
I, they're great. They're great people. They have the, you know, would be wonderful in an emergency, but they're not a police officer on site.
Right. And thank you. Thank you.
Y'all have any more comments?
Yeah, I can tell you that because the number has been so low, uh, in the past and we've had trouble filling those, the, the people that are calling us have not had any issue whatsoever, uh, offering more than fifty dollars an hour, sixty dollars an hour to get our officers to work. They, they just don't have a problem doing that, uh, because outside of here, that price is much higher.
Okay.
So, I, just, thanks for talking.
That's what we needed to know. So, based on that conversation, I, I would recommend, uh, taking Eddie's recommendation to make it sixty-five dollars for the security, uh, uh, you know, put that on there. Now then, this overtime has got me puzzled. Overtime hours per employee, that's gonna be hard to implement regardless where it's at unless it's, they're working exclusively before them for a whole week. So, um, how, how, do you have an idea how that works? Where that overtime line item is ninety dollars?
Yes, I'm, well, it's supposed to be time and a half. Obviously, it's not quite there. I think, um, they're just done, done on average. But I just wanna add here that this is not something a daily basis. We are generating invoices and, um, charging anyone for labor for, uh, our employees. That just doesn't happen. It's mainly related, this part of section, uh, one point five zero seven hundred is really related to anything that either a city property gets damaged and we have to charge someone, or we have to put in a new infrastructure. So, these invoices are not generated on a very, um, regular basis.
So, also, um, the only thing that I could think of that would, um, be an example maybe is, is somebody in a gated community wanted the city to street sweep their sidewalks. Uh, we, we would, we've got a fee schedule here for that, that piece of equipment to be used by the hour, and then we have an hourly rate for the employee. And if he's having to do it after his regular work hours of forty hours, then we would have to charge the overtime. It's kinda the way I see that.
Mm-hmm.
If we were gonna accommodate someone hiring us to use some of this equipment, you know, I don't, we don't do plumbing on private property. It's illegal. So, a lot of this stuff, uh, is, is for like FEMA, if we have a disaster, we have this fee schedule here adopted, and then they say, oh, well, that's what we need to go by. And they populate their spreadsheet for reimbursement based on these forms. That's really what this is all about. We, we're not gonna, um, go around being hired to do jobs whenever there's licensed plumbers that can legally do the work, uh, on private property. Or there's, there's obviously private individuals with tow trucks and dump trucks and all kinds of equipment that's listed here. And so, that's kind of a speed schedule mainly if we're in a, an emergency situation and FEMA's gonna be reimbursing us.
So, so the, that brings a good point. Ava, thank you for bringing it to attention. So, if it's time and a half and we're not at time and a half, so we just take the rate of ninety dollars, is that what we're gonna do? Or do we actually pay them time and a half and we actually put?
We, we bill for this rate and we pay what we pay.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
Um, so, I, the only suggestion I make is that we make the, uh, the, the employee rate match the, um, the sixty-five dollars across the board with security services being sixty-five dollars an hour as well.
So, I don't wanna facilitate the meeting, but that sounds like an amendment to the motion. Or, or the motion, amendment to the, to the document, so however we need to move forward. I don't think anybody is objecting. They may.
Yeah, we have an agenda item, six point four. Do you want to?
So, I make the motion that we amend, make an amendment to the document to reflect that security services move up to, from fifty-five to sixty-five dollars per hour.
Okay. Others, comments?
Oh, and approve the rest of the document as, as presented.
Second.
Craig seconded.
Mr. Corrigan? Seconded. Okay. So, we have a, we have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash sixty-three, which amends Articles one point five of the City of Granberry's Code of Ordinances with the additional amendment to reflect, security services will move from fifty-five dollars to sixty-five dollars. That's agreed? Okay? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That'll pass six and oh. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, Ms. Dooley, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. We will now move to the deliberation agenda. And we're going to discuss, this is not, uh, uh, we're not having a vote on this tonight, but we're going to discuss Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight relating to the disannexation of property in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ of the City of Granberry, and consider authorizing the city manager to amend the state mandated development agreement for the development in the ETJ between Hood County, or it's the, in the ETJ Hood County interlocal agreement. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, just so everybody in the room knows, Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight provides for a way for someone to petition the city to be disannexed from the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Um, so, we currently have a stat, a state mandated development agreement with Hood County that provides for the city to provide the planning of the subdivisions and the development in the ETJ, which is basically one mile from the city limits. And, um, now then that, uh, we have this bill, Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight, there are people that are in the ETJ wishing to be disannexed from that. So, there's no provision in our code to our interlocal agreement with the county to provide planning and development services in those small, uh, Swiss cheese holes that are being created in our ETJ. Now, how does that affect us? I could refer to my planner, but I'll save her the trouble of getting up. What we end up with is a patchwork of, of possibility of disorganized development as you're coming into the city from any direction. And typically, what we do now is we provide for the subdivision plating and, and the master thoroughfare plan. Um, and that's about all we can do. And then if the county has regulations more extreme than what we're able to do under our laws, then we're supposed to enforce those as well. So, like, uh, ensure that they have the right amount of acreage before they have a water well and a septic system, uh, if they're in the ETJ. If, if they're in the county, um, with this hodgepodge Swiss cheese layout we're gonna end up with, we're not gonna have a comprehensive thoroughfare plan that can be enforced. And so, I would like to discuss this with the county, how they would like to address this. I've met with a couple of them in a different meeting, uh, last week discussing Old Granberry Road and talked to them about this issue, but I really feel like before I really get engaged with them, I need to make sure I'm doing what y'all want me to do in relation to that. Um, there, there's, there's other cities that are doing different things. Uh, you know, we, we annexed a lot of territory over probably two decades ago, um, towards Crescent. Before we could go through the involuntary process, they did a voluntary annexation into Crescent and it, and then it went to court and we, we won in the court and then they appealed it and they won in the appeal. And so, it pushed our city limits back to where it is now without an ETJ. The Crescent ETJ butts up against our city limits on the, on the east side of town. And so, back, before all that happened, we expanded our water, uh, CCN. That's our turf that the PUC, Public Utility Com, Commission of Texas, has said, this is where you're obligated to provide utilities because we've annexed that and called it home, so to speak. Well, since the disannexation, that CCN has never been reduced. And we remember we had the Potteet Hill subdivision come before us and want out of that, and we told them, please do the paperwork and do that and, because we, we don't wanna have to provide waterway towards your subdivision. Well, they just went ahead and drilled wells and have been doing it, and they never reduced our CCN. So, we need to address that as part of this effect of Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight. We need to look at what we're doing for Granberry, not what we're doing for Crescent. And then where Crescent has their ETJ in, in our boundary, or, you know, it would normally be our one mile, we have Crescent. We don't have any control over that ETJ towards the east. And, and, and I guess they're gonna petition Crescent to get out of those areas if they want. So, there needs to be some continuity between Crescent and Hood County and the City of Granberry as it relates to developing in the areas around our community. Another thing, if, if we would, I don't know if we could legally do it, maybe Jeremy can straighten me out, but another thing we might talk about doing is completely disannexing all of the ETJ, pulling in all of our CCNs. And then we have an incentive to be a part of the city. If they wanna be a part of the city, we can provide utilities at, on an agreement-type basis that way when they be annexed into the city. No longer do you have involuntary annexation. So, that, so here's what you think about while, while you're, you know, driving to work in the morning, uh, every morning is like, what is the, the best thing that we need to do for Granberry? What is the very best thing that we need to do? Because the state has made it where we are a locked-in city. We can no longer extend our city limits unless it's by... We can no longer extend our city limits unless it's by a voluntary arrangement. We have, basically, we have this many applications to be disannexed in the first ten days of the bill being filed or being effective. And so, I foresee a whole lot more of this coming our way, and the most important thing that we can do is prepare for the next generation for our community. And it seems pretty short-sighted to not do anything. And so, I think we need to sit down with some county officials, maybe they'll put together a committee, maybe they want to meet all together, maybe we can do it in a meeting in this room right here. But I need to kind of plow the ground, so to speak, and I want to make sure y'all are good with it. And this isn't an agreement at this point. This is just talking about what we need to do as a city to better prepare us. The worst thing that could happen is that the county never adopt a master thoroughfare plan, and that's what we're dealing with right now. They do not have a master thoroughfare plan in effect, and that's gonna cause all kinds of development issues. There's two thousand homes being built on Old Granberry Road, and that's in Crescent. It's in their ETJ, and they've approved the final plat, and they didn't do anything to improve Old Granberry Road for those two thousand homes. So, we need to play ball together as a community to make sure that the transportation, the public safety needs are met as the communities grow out in the county and as they come into our city, how that's gonna transform. And it's not an easy puzzle to put together. I still think, in the back of my mind, you know, bunker mentality, what the county, what the state wants us to do is disannex all the ETJ, pull in our horn, so to speak, and then use our resources to incentivize people to be part of the city as it grows. And we have enough water to serve what we've got annexed right now. And so, we may not need to annex anything else, but it develops the way it's supposed to develop, and you end up with a population of eighty thousand people in twenty fifty. You've got enough water under our current lease arrangements to provide those people potable drinking water. You may not be able to have the greenest yard in the world because of limited resources, but you've got the resources that are available to serve that. This area that's outside, in the county, we're putting in subdivisions, and there's a new law that's going into effect September, I mean, January first, that requires a hydraulic engineer to certify if those homes are gonna be served by groundwater. He's gotta certify there's enough water under there to provide for that community for fifty years as part of the plating process. And I've pointed that out to the county judge and to one commissioner, and I asked them to read that statute and understand where we're headed with water. Because I hate for somebody to build a million-dollar home, drill a well and have a residential well of seventeen gallons a minute for ten years and then not have any water the rest of the time. And so, all that has to go into the plating process, and nobody's talking about it. And if nothing else, it's gonna fall on the county to do that, and it may be that we don't need to hire another senior planner, we don't need to be planning all this stuff in the ETJ, and the county can do it because that's who wants to do it anyway, based on what the laws are doing. Any questions?
Yeah, just a question. I guess for Jeremy, I mean, what's involved in terminating our agreement with the ETJ?
So, there's a provision under Chapter forty-two of the Texas Local Government Code that basically says that the council can consider by majority vote a reduction of the ETJ, and if that meant the entire ETJ, then it means the entire ETJ. Certainly an option, maybe not something that I would recommend, just because of some particular issues. One is that the fact that the state didn't come in and completely just remove the ETJ leads me to believe that maybe the next session, something else may come along that we may want to deal with. The other thing has to do with some development agreements that we have from the last successful, not just our last successful annexation, but the last successful annexation in the state of Texas that we did back in twenty nineteen. And so, we may not want to just get rid of the entire ETJ. I think pulling back our CCN to the city limits, I read just this week where a couple of cities, I believe it was North Lake and Denton, have filed with the PUC to reduce their CCNs to the city limits, and their response to the people removing themselves are, if you want to receive these services, these quality of services, this water, this sewer, then voluntarily annex into the city. And so, they're starting to see some voluntary annexation coming in because the people realize, well, it's really not that great of a benefit for me not to be in the ETJ. I know Chris has fielded several calls and petitions. I've gotten a lot of calls on this, asking about it, and, you know, some of these folks, I'm not even really sure, they're just getting this information, hey, I don't have to be in the ETJ anymore. And I asked one of the guys, well, what is the benefit of you filing this petition with the city? And his response was, well, I don't, you guys have these strict ordinances, strict subdivision ordinances, and I looked at him and I said, you live in a subdivision. It's already built. The streets are already in. What are you getting from this? Well, somebody told me I need to get out of the ETJ. So, I will point out one other issue. If you guys recall, the interlocal agreement that we have with the county has been on, I think, the last three or four interlocal meetings that we've had with the county and the school board, and there's been this back and forth about, you know, are they going to regulate, are we going to regulate, who's gonna accept the applications for the plating and permitting, and who's going to oversee all of this? And we've kind of gone back and forth, and the county has suggested that they've wanted to do that, that's why they keep putting it on the agenda. They lack some enforcement ability. But maybe the answer is, again, my, just my opinion, that you make a motion to authorize the city manager to go and sit down with the commissioners and the judge and discuss this, maybe even put it on the next item, and turn it over to them. Let them handle all of the plating outside of the city limits, let them handle all of the permitting, let them deal with whatever enforcement that needs to occur outside of the city limits, and take all of the fuel that we spend to go out there, all the man-hours that we spend to go out there, anything else that we're doing for transmission lines, let's pull that back in the city for the benefit of the city because you're gonna spend money to put something out there or to take care of some issue, and then the next week somebody's in here filing a petition to be removed, and we've spent that money on someone that's not part of the city, that doesn't pay taxes in the city. So, maybe we do need to turn all of that over to the county, and the first step would be to let Chris go and talk with those guys and see if we can come to some sort of an agreement. You know, not just on this, but there's also some roads that are out there that are right at the edge of the ETJ, and who's gonna pay for those to be reworked? We have people calling in saying, hey, this road is bad. Well, part of it's in the county and part of it's in the city, and it's right there in the ETJ, and they want us to pay for it all. Maybe we need to consider de-anexing some of that, those county roads as well, and they'll maintain them because they're really quick to point to the city and say, why don't you guys go out and fix these roads, while we just can sit here on our road and bridge funds and not contribute to any of that? So, maybe I got off on a tangent with some of that stuff, but...
No, I think you're right on track, and I was gonna bring that up, that I actually had a commissioner contact me on a Friday at four-thirty saying, I need you to go fix this road, and it's Contray Creek Road. And I'm like, why don't we just disannex it and we'll forget the whole debate? Because it's always, as long as we've had it annexed since twenty nineteen, they fix their part and don't coordinate with us, and then we go fix our part, don't coordinate with them, and then the next thing you know, he's calling me two years later, dropping about our road again, and I'm like, they built the road, if they built it right to start with, we wouldn't have this problem. But, you know, they're the only organization, government organization in the state of Texas that can build a road without having it engineered. They're not required to do that by law, and they don't. They just go out and build roads the best they want, and I don't have a problem with what they do, that's just what they do, and they're required to do that. But I would like to talk to them about disannexing Contray Creek Road, and with their, if they were in agreement, we could do that, and that would release a little more of our ETJ to the south. So...
Mayor? I have a ton of questions on this whole issue, but my first thought on this is, I think we need an A, B, and C plan. And I don't know what that looks like, but maybe mapping to show us legitimately what it would look like to disannex what we're talking about. Maybe start with everything and then go from there. But as was said earlier, we've had this on the agenda for the joint meeting several times, and nothing has come of it. Maybe we need a subcommittee, and rather than too many chefs in the kitchen, have each entity appoint somebody, include Crescent in that, obviously, I think Mayor Crescent needs to be in there as well. But I think we need to come up with a two or three different scenarios where we can all look at what that looks like. I know it's time-consuming, but if there's anything that I've learned about the legislature is that in the time it takes us to figure out what we need to do, they may change their minds in the next session. So, I want to do this the right way, and I don't want to jump the gun. I want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row and make sure that we look at more than one scenario and not just, you know, do a knee-jerk reaction to what's going on. Does that sound like a good idea?
Well, what you're saying is great. I can't do the mapping, you know, we're sitting here with our, no mapping available to us really.
I didn't mean right this second, I just mean in general.
But I'm wanting to do something soon on at least getting them on board to talk about what we're doing, and I don't mind having a committee. I just think that they're pretty split at the county, and I probably need to deal with all of them at once.
I understand that.
And we may need to do it in this room and have the whole council, or whatever, but if you get three of them, that's a quorum, and you really need a bipartisan group, and I'm not sure I can get that bipartisan group together to make a committee from the county.
Well...
That's what I'm doing.
I guess what I'm asking is, can we at least ask the question?
Sure.
Mr. Rodriguez, did you have?
Yeah, and this is maybe to Chris. Chris, I know there's some, the parts of some houses that are not in the city limits, but they still rely on city water utilities and stuff like that. So, how do you address those that are not in the city of Granberry?
If they're already receiving services, they would, they're required to continue to receive services. They're in our CCN, and that's why I'm saying where we're not providing services to areas where we have a CCN, we should reduce that CCN. And that way, just like Potteet Hills, for example, is in Crescent City, and the developer never did what they said they were gonna do, the paperwork, to reduce the CCN. There's probably a ten to twenty thousand dollar cost for them to have done that, and they didn't do it, but there was no mechanism for us to mandate it. You know, we said, they sat right there and told us they were gonna do it, and then they haven't done it. And so, what is our recourse from that? Not much, except go do it ourselves.
Mr. Corgan? So, from what I'm understanding, we can reduce our CCN without doing anything, changing the bounds of the ETJ. Is that correct?
Two different issues, that's exactly right.
Okay. So, I think worst-case scenario, or maybe best-case scenario, I guess we'll see, that would probably be where I would recommend we start. I agree that there's no reason to have things sitting out there that are ultimately going to affect the budget, which affects the services that we provide and the man-hours and so on and so forth, if it's never gonna happen. Or if we're getting requests to be pulled out, obviously, to use your description, you know, Swiss cheese, ETJ has not been official to anyone because it just makes development and the reasons that we have, what we have, essentially makes all the time and the effort that's gone into what the city would like to see as development, and what the state requires us to have when it comes to those future plans, it makes them almost null and void if we're not required, if we're required to have the plans, but we can't, we have no mechanism to enforce them. So, I would start there and see where that goes, but yeah, I definitely think, you know, we have to pull the trigger on something, we can't just let this continue to fester.
What I'm hearing from both sides here, Craig and Trish, everybody, but, and, you know, I'm not mandating, here's what I'm hearing, and could be wrong, but Chris is our point person, I think we can agree on that. Chris, we can't ask to go do it, I wouldn't ask to go do it all on his own, picks his team, see who he needs to go to, initiates a meeting with the county and their team, if they can get a team together. And then from that meeting, there will be some comments, direction that bring back to the council, make your own suggestions of where we go, and then continue to discuss and provide direction, go back to them, and then probably a couple of times, then you're gonna come back, there's gonna be two or three hard issues that we have to sit down and discuss, and at that point would be the, you know, the detail, the maps, the hard issues, and then we make a decision as a council. But, you know, what I'm hearing is Chris is the point person, choose a team, go attack this fuzzy situation, this fuzzy problem right now. Yes, sir?
Mayor, I would even add to that, not only, you know, the city manager being the point person, but also maybe having the presiding officer of this board tag along with Chris and then bring those suggestions back to the city council, but that's my suggestion.
He gets to choose his, well, it suggests he choose a team.
I, you know, I was just sitting here thinking, while you were reframing what we've said tonight, you know, the city for decades has hired people to work in the county area of the ETJ at taxpayer expense and with the intentions of having orderly development in Granberry and as you're coming into Granberry and someday part of the city. With that no longer being a possibility, unless there's some kind of incentive to attract someone to want to be in the city, we really do need to cut our costs of operating the planning department. We can't seem to hire a planner that we've interviewed, 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 and we haven't been able to find the right person. So, really, we're spending money to develop in the county, and the county, I'll just tell you, they lobbied for this bill, and they wanted this bill. And I don't know that all of them did, but I know of two commissioners that told me straight up, we're gonna get it approved, and they did. And I think that they don't understand what we've been doing for them for decades, is doing this planning in the county in the ETJ for the benefit of Granberry and Hood County. So, with that in mind, I want y'all to understand my thought process, let's cut expenses, let's take care of Granberry, and let the county take care of the county. So, we'll figure this out, but I don't mind having up to three of you, if you're interested in serving on this committee, let me know. We'll put something together and get it done. If you need to vote on it, vote on that, but I don't think you do, just to be able to, three of you, that's not a quorum, we can go have a meeting, but everybody knows what we're doing, we're not being sneaky, we're being transparent with the public, we're trying to do what's best for Granberry, and we're gonna let the county do what's best for the county, and we're gonna try to encourage them, some points that they need to do that's best for the county in our opinion, to be honest with you. We've got, we've got high hopes for the county. We've got, we've got high hopes for the county to develop a master thoroughfare plan for the entire county, not just Old Granbury Road, but for the whole county. And had we done that 25 years ago, we would have left turn lanes off of Fall Creek Highway into subdivisions that now you're having to stop and back up traffic and get rear ended because there's not a left turn lane or a right turn lane into a subdivision as it develops, and those are the things that need to be addressed, and so that's kind of where I'm at.
Ms. Burwell?
I just want to make a quick comment. First of all, I don't mind serving on that committee, I don't know who else wants to do that. The other thing is, if we're going to do this, maybe we need to come up with a financial analysis of what we have spent in the county to give it to the county commissioners.
We can do that. We can do that.
I'll just add one thing, whatever the plan is, it needs to be done in a very expeditious manner, because the way this bill is written, the holes are already there, there's no process, no waiting period, once a petition is filed, and all of the requirements are there, that's set out by the statute, the signatures are certified by the city secretary, and so on, effectively, we have to redraw our maps every single day, we're going to re, we're redoing the maps as soon as we get them back up online, but every day, someone comes in, it meets the requirements, effectively, per the statute, it it's done. Now, if we don't say, okay, you're out today, there's a, there's a fallback provision that says 45 days by operation of law, but effectively, the way the law is written is, once they file an effective petition, they're out. So we can draw you a map today, and tomorrow it's not even going to be the same, and the day after, and maybe even three hours later. So whatever the plan is, it, this needs to move along, and we need to decide, because someone may come in with a a development plan tomorrow, and here we are, spending money, and then everyone around them is out of the ETJ two days later. So we need to, we need to consider that.
Too fast to ask for an update report in two weeks?
Love, love to try to put something together with the county. I would love to put something together with the county that quick, if at all possible.
Let's shoot for it, see all of our efforts.
Mr. Woodley?
So we could, we could disannex all of the ETJ in one fell swoop, or do we have to have county permission for that? Because a minute ago, you said something about having to get the county to approve something.
That's for a street that's in the city limits, and you need their, you need their support to disannex a street.
But if it's not in the city limits, if it's in the ETJ?
We don't, we don't maintain it anyway. If it's in the ETJ.
So we, so we could disannex all of the ETJ in one fell swoop, and then this is this is.
We can do that unless the tracks of land that we have under development agreements, yes.
Okay.
Or anyone who voluntarily entered into the ETJ, which I don't know if we have anyone like that or not, but that's what the law says.
Is there a downside to doing that?
We don't see it, maybe Kara would tell us the downside, I've, I've really scratched my head trying to figure it out, but if we, under this circumstance, I can't see what good it does to have a Swiss cheese ETJ.
The other thing to consider is, what if every single person in the ETJ comes and files a petition, it's gone anyway?
Right.
So do we do it for them now and vote for a reduction of the entire ETJ, or we sit here and redraw a map every single day?
And that's what I was hearing, if we're going to have to redraw a map, and then the next day, it's another deal, we're spending a whole lot more time if we do all this at one time, and just, we're done.
I have one comment on that, we do have people who have voluntarily annexed, and that will affect them, right? And if we, if we, well, it will, because don't they have to be contiguous? If we disannex everybody, and the people who still want to be voluntarily annexed in, they still have to be contiguous with the city to do that, correct? Am I correct on that?
It has to be contiguous with the city limits, not the ETJ.
Understood.
Yeah.
So if there's somebody in between the city limits and the ETJ.
Can't do it.
Then we can't do it. That's, that would be the holdup that I would see.
But we can't do that anyway, the ETJ doesn't have anything to do with that, right?
No, we, we can't.
They still have to be, they still have to be contiguous or contiguous with the city.
So, so say there was, say there was a track of land, a section of land, a thousand feet from our city limits, that wanted to be in the city limits by agreement. If if it does not touch our city limits, we can't even do a voluntary annexation. In the old days, you could do an annexation of a thousand foot and make it contiguous to that property involuntarily, and then you could have the voluntary, so we don't have that flexibility anymore. So again, we're a, our boundaries are fixed, just like we were in the metroplex, surrounded by other cities. We've got the unannexed areas are our boundaries, and whether it's in the ETJ or not really doesn't matter, because we can't enforce, there's only one law, I think, that we can enforce in the ETJ, off the top of my head, and that's the billboard prohibition. And we don't have an ETJ between here and Crescent, so it doesn't matter that direction, that's Crescent's jurisdiction, so we can prohibit them in our city limits if we don't have an ETJ. If we, if we were adjacent to a county of a million people or more, you can enforce the fire code in the ETJ, but you can't do that in our county. So I don't know of any regulations that we're legally able to do, other than the agreement that we have with the county to plat, the subdivision regulations, that's it. And so I'm like, we can't hire a planner, maybe there's a reason we can't hire planners, because we don't need a planner. Maybe it's a little divine intervention here, I don't know, we'll see.
Mayor?
Mr. Woodley?
I think you framed it, but I think the next step is, Chris, you know, pick a team or volunteer, I mean, I'd be happy to serve on that as well, have initial meeting with the county, and kind of lay out, you know, what the opportunity is, or what we need to get resolved, get their feedback on it, we could still come back with their feedback and make, make our own decision, and let them know, you know, what's on our mind, and, you know, what our concerns are, and what's the need state of of getting this resolved, and based on the, you know, receptivity that they have of what some of our issues and concerns are, then we can make our own decision.
And, and just, just to be completely clear, we can terminate that agreement on our own, and then by default, they have to do the platting in that area.
Yeah, I, as I said, I mean, I think the, I think the neighborly thing to do is, you know, go have a meeting with them and kind of lay out, as you said earlier, lay out what, you know, what the, what the challenges are we have, and what we need to resolve, and get their feedback, and maybe they're, you know, maybe there's another solution we haven't thought of, so.
And, and you know, I may be incorrect, I may have stated, misstated, I believe that the state law requires the city and the county to have an agreement, and our agreement may be, we, is agreement not to have an agreement.
Right, sure.
The county's going to do it, so, I mean, that's kind of what we're facing, and if, here's the thing, if somebody is developing, okay, I've got a project right now that they're in the ETJ, the developer called me, said, hey, we're in your ETJ, how does Senate Bill 2038 line up with our project? And I said, well, if you don't want to be in the ETJ, you just do what the petition says, and I have to let you out. And, but I said, hopefully, you know, you need some of our services, and so we're going to want you to be annexed into the city if you want water and sewer. And I said, there may be some other incentives that we could do as well, but I don't know what you're going to develop yet, but we're all ears to try to figure out a way to to keep our city growing, and and provide services, and have the public, you know, be part of our community, instead of just coming in and going to our parks and recreation department, and then going back and never paying for it, you know, we'd like for people to be part of the community stakeholders, instead of just people that come here and enjoy our communities.
Investors.
Yeah. Thanks.
Good discussion, okay. Do you feel like you have enough direction?
Yeah, if you'll authorize, just authorize me to do what you want me to do with a motion, and I'll get her done.
It's a discussion, can I make a motion on a discussion?
And the second part is.
Consider authorizing. Oh, I have to read the whole thing? Okay.
Just, just the second part, authorize the city manager.
Do I hear a motion to authorize the city manager to amend the state mandated development agreement for the development in the ETJ?
It's all moved.
Mr. Corgan, move.
Second.
Mr. Woodley, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think you could, I think you have it.
We'll go to work.
Thank you, appreciate the input on that. Let's move to seven point two, discussion of the city's social media archiving program and the ability of city council members to utilize the program.
Thank you, we do have some software that's been available for quite some time, and I thought, here we are in election season again, and it would be good for you all to understand what's available to you as a resource if you're going to be on social media, talking city business. So there's some requirements passed in the last legislative session that are more stringent than the past as well, we need to observe those, they went into effect September 1st. I've asked deputy city manager Michael Ross to kind of go over Archive Social that we have, and and tell us about how it fits, and encourage you all to be a part of that.
Mayor, city council, as Chris mentioned, Texas Senate Bill 944 was passed as an amendment to the Public Information Act, it, it did go much further in saying that, in clarifying and saying that not just city council members, but anyone that conducts, if if they're a city official and they conduct city business or city communications on their social media sites, those have to be retained under the Public Information Act. What we do, what we provided to help anyone, city council in particular here, have is an archiving program that we provide as a city, and Archive Social is the name of it, we use it for all of our own sites, it's been available to you all, but we felt, Chris felt, that we needed to come and just remind all of you that we encourage you to use that if you do use your social media as anything council member related, and I think many, many of you do, and so it's, we just want to make sure you understand that that Archive Social is available, and that we pay that subscription to cover you all as well, and that's what we encourage you to do, so that we can provide those protections for you if there ever is a public information request, you don't have to go then try to find whatever's been requested in your, in your, in your communications on social media. Our public information, our, it's called Public Information Officer Communications Manager in our case, would be responsible for doing that, and would be able to do that if if that, those sites were being retained, and it's, it's as simple as I understand it is making, making him a, an additional administrator, and he can, we can go through those details with any of you that are, that are ready to do that when the time comes, Jeff's ready to sit down and and work through that with you.
It's really a liberating tool, it feels like bondage, but it's really not, it's a liberating tool that if you're talking on social media and you speak about something related to city business, the law requires you to, to save that and provide that to the records office, which is Carla's office, immediately, and that's the new law. So this really is a liberation device to allow you to continue to do that and not worry about having to retain those records, it's going to be done for you automatically. So if you create a, a social media page for city business, or you're using your own, just get with Jeff, and he'll set it up, he'll never get on there again after he gets it established, and then he can retrieve those if somebody asks for those records, they can be retrieved, and we won't end up in a situation where somebody challenges you for deleting a public record, and it truly is gone because we didn't save it, and y'all have all been warned in a recorded meeting that you're supposed to get those records and turn them in to comply with the law, I mean, that's just the law that we're under. And so I don't even have a social media account because of that, I may get one because of this software, just so that I can talk to people and know that the records are being recorded in a meeting of the law. I've always abstained from using social media because of that record requirement, but, well, another reason is because it makes you stay awake at not worrying about stuff. But it's a great communication tool, and, you know, anyway, so that's, it's really a liberating thing, we just wanted to bring that to your attention, please get with Jeff and and set yours up with him, and it's not like we're monitoring it or reading what you're putting, we can see it anyway if we go to your feed, but it records the, the city-related business. Does it record everything, or just the city-related business?
It, it records the page, so the comments and the post.
Okay.
So.
All right.
So even if, even if an individual would put a post on there, and later on, they inadvertently had posted Happy Cheeseburger Day, and then they realized they were on your page instead of McDonald's, when they delete that, that is, that is still archived in our system. And I'll tell you, since I have a moment here, this takes five minutes, we can do it over the phone, it's a very simple process.
Mayor?
Yes.
Hey, Jeff, how does it decipher whether it's city stuff, or you're just ranting on some other topic?
The question would be, and it's really a legal question that our city attorney can answer, is, are you using a Facebook page, because you are a city official, are you using a Facebook page and creating government records? And he can define what those are, and if you are, they need to be archived. So even if it's, and I reached out to you to become a friend this week on Facebook, because that's one of the things we have to do, is if you're going to make me an admin, you'll send me an invitation, and I'll be a friend of yours already, so it makes that easier, if you're creating government records on your Eddie Rodriguez Facebook page, that needs to be archived, and I can let the city attorney tell you what a government record is.
So I'll jump in, the test on it is, is actually conducting city business, that's the legal test of whether or not it's a, a, a public record or not. So an example of this, we talked about this morning, the mayor has a page that's Jim Jarrett Mayor, and he puts city business on there, he gets with Jeff, he gets that connected, that's great, and then he has Jim Jarrett personal page, and he puts something on his mayor page, and then he shares it on his personal page, now he's just opened up his personal page by conducting city business, by posting his mayor page on his personal page, now he's got to call Jeff and say, well, set up my personal page now. We're talking about social media, right? But don't think this is limited just to that, this includes text messages, call logs, emails, anything where you're conducting personal business, whether or not it's on a city device or a personal device. And this is, this is not really new, this has been the law since 2000, 2001, there are a lot of attorney general opinions on this, it went back and forth, the reason that it became codified is because there was a Mr. Smarty County Commissioner in a county down in South Texas who said, I don't have to give you that information, it was on my personal device, they tried the case, it went up through the appellate process, he lost. So the, the legislature decided, this is actually, Senate Bill 944 was passed in 2019, we've, we've discussed this before, but we're just bringing it back before you again, so they codified it to say, no, you have to retain those records, you are not the owner of those records if it's about city business, you're, you're only the temporary custodian of those records, and it's not, well, I'll hold on to these in case somebody sends an open records request later. If you conduct city business, you should immediately be forwarding them to, the, the definition in the statute says the PIO, the Public Information Officer, or whoever we assign, in, in this case, it's, it's our communications director, that is your title, right? I think I got that right. But, but yeah, if, if, if you text me, well, not me, we, we have a certain type of privilege, but if you text Greg and say, hey, you want to go to happy hour at Bob's tonight after council meeting, that's not city business, you don't need to worry about that. If you send him a message and say, hey, at this, this next meeting, we're going to discuss what we're going to do with the ETJ, that is, you should immediately go, oh, man, this screenshot, email Carla, here's my next record.
Scared you.
What you don't want to happen is you look at something, you go, man, I don't need this stuff anymore, delete it, or on one of my devices, I found that after so many days, it'll just start deleting emails and such, right? And then somebody else is the recipient of that email, and six months from now, they get mad at me about something, and they say, he sent me an email that said blah, 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 and then here comes a, an open records request, and I say, well, I don't have it, did you send it as the temporary custodian, did you send it to the custodian of records? No, I don't have it. They have it, why don't you? You, you destroyed governmental record, potentially a felony, you deleted it, that's why it's, we're, we're bringing this back up again, it's very important, if you have these records that are city business, you're discussing city business, whatever it may be, make sure they get archived. This particular. it may be, make sure they get archived. This particular issue is about social media tonight because we have the software that's going to make that easier for you guys. But I just wanted to remind you about text messages, emails, that those kinds of things are important to, to forward on as well, even from your private devices, okay?
Other questions? Feel liberated?
I feel like a hostage.
I feel like an ankle monitor to me.
Who would run, who would want to be elected official? You're going to be under this scrutiny.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Appreciate it. So, okay. No other business here? Okay. So I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551071 is consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551072 is deliberation regarding real property. And 551087 is deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now into executive session. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no tax, action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Do we have any further business? There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned.